The County Board of Commissioners, our road trip continues. We're in Upper Deerfield. Appreciate the officials from Upper Deerfield there clearly, John, the audio for allowing us to be here. And it's, I appreciate that. So, let me start?
Adequate notice of this meeting was provided in accordance with Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, Senator Byron and Bear Open Public Meetings Act.
All right, we'll, all right, we'll have a few, we'll have do a silent meditation, raise your seat, then we'll have the pledge allegiance, Commissioner Saleo, if you would do that for us. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the innocent republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the heart.
Clark, please take the role.
Commissioner Pearson?
Present.
Commissioner Musso. Commissioner Capizola?
Here.
Commissioner Saleo?
Here.
Commissioner Loads? Deputy Director Romero? Director Aubrey?
Here.
Do I have a motion and second to accept and dispense with the reading of the minutes from the last public meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Voice vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Look at the, first off, the, do you mind reading the dedications we have?
In a letter dated April 21st, 2023, the Cumberland County Board of Health informed the Cumberland County Board of County Commissioners of Resolution 042023-06 adopted at the formal meeting held on April 19th, 2023, in support of Senate Bill Number 2413 requiring minimum annual state appropriation of $10 million for public health priority funding to the Senate Health, Human Services, and Senior Citizens Committee.
I guess the next presentation, we're kind of lucky today. We have two queeeds or that are competing in the pageants, so they both would come up and actually, should do one at a time, pick which one would like to come up and just give us a presentation.
Ashley Campbell.
Which was me?
That's it. This is Ms. Gloucester, Ashley Campbell, who happens to be, her mom is an employee of the county, which is special, so. Head manager, sorry.
Can everyone hear me well when I speak like this? Okay, trying to use my inside house voice. First and foremost, thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. The commissioners have always been very supportive in my pageant life for the past four years, so it's always nice to come back and update you all on how I'm developing as a young woman. My name is Ashley Brooke Campbell, and I'm currently Ms. Gloucester County within the Miss America Opportunity, which means myself and my friend Shelby will compete in about less than 20 days for the Miss New Jersey title, so wish us luck and it's a lot of fun. Thank you. I'm here today because I am a Bristol, New Jersey native, although I have the Ms. Gloucester County title. Recently, I just graduated from Rowan University with my Bachelor of Arts in Psychology, my dance minor, and honors concentration, and next I'll be getting my Masters in Clinical Mental Health Counseling, and I'm forever grateful that I have an answer as to what is next when people ask me, which is nice. And for my community involvement, I'm also a sister of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. Shout out to my sorority back, both pleasantly under Rowan, at Rowan University. I'm sorry, Ms. Donovan. I'm also a member of the NAACP, which is the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, and I joined at Rowan University. And clearly, as I mentioned, I'm Ms. Gloucester County, so I've been a part of the Miss America Opportunity for four years now. What I promote, what I'm in my role, is the One Step Forward Initiative, and I like to, it's not a joke, but I like to say that it's more than just my platform or my initiative, but it's a part of who I am as a person. And what I do with that is create mental health safe spaces for marginalized identities. And when I share that with people, some people may have their own reservations about what that means, but most likely what I mean by that is just I create marginalized safe spaces for people who face societal disadvantages. So if anyone who comes from, let's say for myself, I'm a person of color, I come from a single-parent household, first-generation college student, and it's a non exhaustive list, but I've seen that people who have these certain advantages in life don't necessarily have those safe spaces to talk about what they're experiencing internally. I've seen this when I've spoken in schools, actually, maybe a few weeks ago, I spoke at the Boys and Girls Club, and that was the first time they've actually heard about the term mental health. So that's why what I take, what I do very seriously, and I take it to heart. I've been able to present it 200 times across the state as Ashley within my titles, and just as a human being as well. The One Step Forward Initiative's been standing since 2019, and I get to promote it once again on the Miss New Jersey stage, as I mentioned earlier, so that's a blessing in itself. So I, that's pretty much all of what I have for you all today. That's just who I am as a person. I'm a mental health advocate, and that's what I stand by, and that's what I want to do with my life. If anyone has any questions for me, I love to talk. I'm very personable, so if you have any questions, I'll answer, but if not, I'll be hanging around for a little bit if anybody wants to talk about me. That's all. Thank you.
Let the record that Commissioner Loads has just arrived, so.
And the time is 6:06.
Thank you, Ashley, and appreciate that. And Shelby, the next one is Shelby Watts, if you would like to come on up and share a little bit of where you're coming from. This is Ms. Cumberland, too.
Can everybody hear me? Okay, sorry, I'm a quiet speaker. My name is Shelby Watts, and I currently hold the title of Miss Cumberland County 2023 for the Miss America Organization. So just like Ashley said, I'll be competing for the title of Miss New Jersey in June, so good luck to both of us. I'm very excited. Like Ashley said, a part of the Miss America Organization's competition is our Social Impact Initiative or Community Service Initiative. My personal community service initiative is Think Fast for Pediatric Stroke Awareness. I am a stroke survivor. I survived a stroke at 11 years old, and part of my story is the fact that I was turned away at the hospital because of my age. I was misdiagnosed with a migraine and denied the proper care and the valuable care that happens in the first hours of surviving a stroke. So for me, luckily, my pediatrician overlooked my paperwork and realized that the symptoms that I was expressing, the arm weakness, the face drooping, slurred speech, was all consistent with a stroke, and I was able to be admitted into Children's Hospital of Philadelphia, where I received the care that I was supposed to receive in the first hours of surviving my stroke. So now I get to travel the state of New Jersey and share my story and help bring awareness to pediatric stroke. A part of my ability as Miss New Jersey that I would love to be able to bring to the table as Miss New Jersey is the fact that I'm a spokesperson for the American Stroke Association. I was given that honor when I survived my stroke and was able to actually become the cover of their Stroke Connections magazine, which I think is a really cool thing to share, especially as an 11-year-old. So yeah, that's what I do. That's my mission as Miss New Jersey, and I always like to leave everybody with the FAST acronym when I give speeches. So FAST stands for Facial Drooping, Arm Weakness, Slurred Speech, Time to Call 911, and that's the acronym that will be able to save a life just like mine. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the way to start a meeting, so. It's good. All right, I guess the next we'll start with the, the presentation for the, and our words, Jeff?
Sure.
Mr. Ridgeway?
I can assure everyone I am not giving this presentation like last month. So, the County Option Program, it was enacted five years ago, and then it just became available to Cumberland County last year. We had conducted an RP for a consultant to kind of assist us in the process, because it's a very complicated thing. The consultant is Myers &amp; Stoffer, who are here today. They'll be the ones conducting the presentation, and then at the conclusion of their presentation, go into the public hearing, and then anybody asks questions, comments, they're here to help assist with those. And so, if anyone who wants to participate from the team, was it shared with all of you, or just a couple? Okay. Looks like you have some free reign if you want to go up here, so. Up to you.
Thank you, Jeff, for that introduction. My name's Margaret, and to me it's Kevin. And we wanted to give some background on the program, roughly, and then just explain how it works. First of all, the state of New Jersey passed legislation in 2018 for a pilot program. And what it does is provides funding for hospitals through the Medicaid program, and we'll get to how it does that in just a moment, but just for those of you who are not familiar with the program, what we're trying to do is bring more funding into the hospitals that serve the critical needs of those of you in Cumberland County. In 2018, the legislature passed the opportunity for this program and set it up for seven counties. And then in 2022, they expanded the program so that now Cumberland County and four other counties, for a total of 12 counties, can participate in the program. So within Cumberland County, there are two hospitals that will get to participate if this, if this ordinance is passed tonight. Not only does it fund the hospitals, but also the county is set to receive funding through the program of over $1 million every year. The fee program is operated by the county, and then the payment program, where the money goes back to the hospitals, is actually administered by the Medicaid program, which is a state Medicaid agency for the state. It's the New Jersey Department of Human Services, Division of Medical Assistance and Health Services, operates the payment methodology. Well, with most things dealing with the government, it's a little bit complicated. And so what we have to do is comply with the federal rules for funding Medicaid, and then also state rules, and then, of course, the county will have its own policies related to the program. And so what it does is allows hospitals to actually pay an assessment, a fee, a tax, what's your, you know, what word you want to use. We call it an assessment, but it's a fee program. And these hospitals will pay this money in, and because Medicaid is a state and federal funded program, these monies that are paid in by the county can be used as state share dollars. They can be matched with federal share dollars with the Medicaid program to then bring the federal and state dollars back to the hospitals. Okay, so basically, the hospitals are paying in the fee. Those funds, a portion of those funds are matched with federal dollars through the Medicaid program, and then those payments are made back to hospitals if they provide services to Medicaid beneficiaries, patients.
Is it only a dollar?
It's more than $1 per dollar. So typically, like, typically, you're going to have a federal match rate of 50%, so if you put up a dollar, the feds are going to give you an extra dollar. Okay? The program, if this is passed, will begin July 1st, 2023. There will be an annual program, because of a federal requirement, it can be done year after year, and every year, the program has to get reapproved. So the program has to be designed and developed by the county using and following all of the rules that the state has put in place. And then hospitals are involved. They have what we're calling stakeholder engagement. The hospitals are involved, they're communicated with, we communicate with them, the county, and then they communicate back to the county, and they have helped tremendously in the design of the program. Through this process, there's been some back and forth, and the county was able to rely on information that was gained during the first two years of the program, which were the seven pilot counties. There was a lot learned during that process, both by the counties and then also the state. During that time period, set up the program and figured out what their roles were going to be and their operations manual. So what we're here tonight to discuss is whether or not the county will set up a fee program so that these hospitals are then required to pay a fee into the county. The county administration would then collect the fee, and as Jeff said, that they contracted with Myers &amp; Stoffer, at this point in time, we would actually assist with that process. Once the money gets turned into the county, then it gets transferred to the state through an intergovernmental transfer agreement, okay, which is another requirement of the county, is to sign that agreement. The fees would be collected each quarter, and the amount is known at the beginning of the year. The amount is known, once you set up the design of the program, you know what the dollar amount is, and then based on that, we know what the fee will be. In fact, state law caps that fee at 2.5% of their net patient revenue. The other important thing we wanted to bring up tonight is, we mentioned, and Kevin will go over the dollar amounts, that the county will keep over $1 million per year out of this program, and there are no restrictions on how they use that money. So the funds come into the county, the county spends it anyway, they need to spend it. Okay? So Kevin, I'll turn it over to you this time.
Thanks, Margaret. So just want to go over the financial impact now. The fees will be collected from each hospital. There are two in the county, Inspira and Encompass Rehab. We listed the totals here for both counties. So if you have the handout, the total collected across both counties is nearly $13 million. It's based on non-Medicaid discharges for each particular hospital. So Inspira will pay in a bit more than Encompass does. The fees retained by the county, as Margaret mentioned, is around $1 million. State statute says it can be up to 9% of the total. The rest is transferred to DMAHS. DMAHS, by state statute, is allowed to keep 1% of the total. And then after the match from CMS, Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services, the payments to the county hospitals are then over $30 million. So once, once the payments are made to the county hospitals, we anticipate a net gain of the $30 million minus the $13 million, or approximately $17.3 million gain to the county hospitals. And again, this is across both Inspira and Encompass. And then finally, just to go kind of through the flow of how all this works. So first, the hospitals will pay the fees to the county, around the $13 million that I mentioned. Then the county keeps 9%, which, as Margaret mentioned, the county is free to do with it what it pleases. The state receives the rest of the fees. The DMAHS retains the 1% according to state statute. So the remaining 90% is then matched at the federal level by Center for Medicaid and Medicare Services. New Jersey's federal Medicaid assistance percentage is around 64%, so it's a little bit more than a one-to-one match, actually. So the matching funds are around $20 million. These are then sent on the way back to the Medicaid Managed Care Organizations in New Jersey. These managed care organizations will retain approximately 5.1% of the $32 million that they receive, and then the remaining $30.3 million are then paid out back to the hospitals, resulting in the net gain of around $17 million that I mentioned on the previous slide. And that is how the funding works. And I don't believe we have anything else, so we are happy to answer questions this time.
Can you guys pass the microphone to Mr. Hawke? Someone's got to get up and give the mic if they're asking questions.
No, we can't. We have to open up into public.
So, all right, all right, let's get it open to the public first, so that they can ask questions, all right? Mr. Hawke, give us one.
Wait, we have to open up.
All right, so are we doing that right now before the presentation?
In compliance with NJSA 40A colon 2-17, the ordinance may be read by title only. Do I have a motion and second that the ordinance be read on final reading by title only? Voice vote?
All fave?
Aye.
Ordinance 2023-2, ordinance establishing the New Jersey County Option Hospital Fee Program for the County of Cumberland. Do I have a motion and a second to open public hearing on ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Voice vote?
Fave. You guys are finished, but there were questions, there are questions, so, okay. My question is? Dean Hawke? Put the phone up, this is. You want to take that, Margaret? Don't, don't take credit for it.
This funding mechanism was, is used by, for the most part, by state Medicaid agencies. It's very rare to see this on a local county government level. And in fact, it's quite, we were talking earlier about, there's some very distinct advantages to having it on a county level. But in Medicaid programs, again, the way that Medicaid programs are funded in many different ways for the non-federal share, and most of that is like a state appropriation. And most states don't have money they just want to throw at the Medicaid program, so they limit how much money they can provide to the Medicaid program. And providers, through the federal government and the federal regulations, many, many years ago, came up with a way for providers to actually contribute to the state so that additional money can be spent on the Medicaid program and draw down those federal dollars. So I don't know exactly what the origin of this is, but in the federal regulations, there's a list of about 18 different types of providers that can pay in provider taxes that can then be matched with federal dollars for the Medicaid program. And then there are some rules around that. You can't hold those harm lists, there has to be a broad-based or uniform tax, or if it's not, then it has to meet certain tests. So there are some rules around it, but it's basically a way for Medicaid providers or healthcare providers to contribute to the Medicaid program by paying into the state share funds, supplementing basically appropriations from the legislature. You're welcome.
Are you noticing in your pilot programs that more doctors are more willing to accept Medicaid because of this?
Well, in this particular pilot program, it's just the hospitals that are receiving payments.
Okay.
And this, we're in our second year of the program, so I don't know that we have, we haven't been through the program long enough to recognize whether or not participation is increasing. However, in some counties, there are, there may be a hospital that has very low Medicaid utilization, and they are certainly talking about increasing their Medicaid participation or services in order to benefit from the program. So it is, it is most definitely a hope that hospitals will, will serve the Medicaid population. That is a goal of the program.
Well, the follow-up today, do we have a lot of Medicaid? What's our percentage down here compared to, since we're the, we're the next step, not the, not the initial seven or whatever? What's our?
I don't know that off the top of my head, but you can look that up. It's a good question.
Sandy Acevedo, Upper Deerfield Township. What is the, the cost to the county for your assistance helping with the fee collection that you were mentioning?
Our fee is just over $100,000. And this fee, this contract runs one year. It began at the beginning of November last year, and it runs through the end of October. And it involved the design, development of the modeling, and the iterations involved there, communication with the county and the hospitals, all of the documents that are required for approval through the state and federal program, and then also drafts of the ordinance for the county. Then we'll also participate in the communication to hospitals that's required by state law and state regulation, which is a fee notice that will go out, and then we'll also prepare all the invoicing, and then also any accounting journals that are required for the program.
$100,000?
It's not exactly $100,000. It's, do you have that dollar amount?
I do not have that committed to me, but if, I can certainly provide that.
Yeah, we have enough.
You've done this elsewhere, right? That's why we, your experience in doing the, setting up this program, so.
Oh, we do. Myers &amp; Stoffer's been in business 45 years, and we're committed to governmental healthcare accounting. That's all we do. So yes, we have.
You've done this elsewhere.
And then we've also participated with. And then we've also participated with the pilot county, we're working with, right now, we're working with four counties total.
Which ones are they?
Essex, Monmouth, Ocean, and of course Cumberland.
The seven pilot.
Essex, Atlantic, Passaic, Camden, I might need help.
There's only twenty-one counties.
I'm out of Mississippi. I can't, it's Burlington, Mercer.
Burlington, Mercer?
Burlington was new this year. But Mercer wasn't original.
How'd they do in Burlington?
They're just starting out, they're the same.
And what about Mercer?
Mercer, we haven't worked with, but they persist. All counties that were able to participate have participated and have continued to participate.
And the fees are about the same?
The fees are different. It depends on the net patient revenue of your hospital. So your higher, your counties with more hospitals and higher revenue hospitals will have a higher fee, because the fee is based on two point five percent of net patient revenue, and then the county fee is nine percent of that. So it's completely based on the hospital revenue.
Good evening. Welcome to Upper Deerfield. I'm going to have to reach away for all the Deerfield, Deerfield fascists. I just love this. I really wanted to bring some tide, because it really sounds like it's some money laundering. I'm reading the ordinance, and it says here, each hospital inpatient non-Medicare discharge shall be, shall be charged a fee. Okay? And then I read that there will be no impact on patients or payers. Where does the hospital make their money? If not from the patients and the insurance companies. They don't manufacture anything, they don't have a store, they sell stuff. So this is going to fall on the backs of the patients, and the payer is at the hospital. And I don't understand why the state just isn't charging the hospital and then sending the money back. Why is it going through the channels of the counties? I mean, it doesn't sound reasonable. Okay? And ninety-one percent goes back to the state, when they could be getting a hundred percent without eliminating, with eliminating Cumberland County or any county. So it doesn't make much sense. I really think you need a bottle of tonic.
So it sounds like money laundering. Oftentimes, people hear this and they think, and we've also heard the term shell game. So in order to get funding to the Medicaid program and to the providers who are providing service, many times, a Medicaid program pays very little, a small percentage of the cost of actually providing the care. And in order to make ends meet, so to speak, or especially in a provider situation that provides very high Medicaid utilization, they might be competing with a hospital that has very high commercial payer rates, I mean, commercial payer utilization, and then commercial payers pay more. I can't explain why the funding mechanisms are so complicated in the government programs. Look at the tax code, I guess I'd say that, it's complicated. You're right, it could go through the state. In New Jersey, the state Medicaid program has opted to have a very, very, very small provider fee program and does not have a supplemental payment program. Most states in the country have a big hospital supplemental payment program where the fees go directly to the state. The New Jersey legislature passed the opportunity for counties to do this, and counties are trying to take advantage of it. It benefits the county, it keeps the program on a local level rather than a state level. One benefit to it being in the county is that the county gets to decide what is fair on the county level. If you get on a statewide basis and you have, you have a county with smaller hospitals, you can make sure that the program is fair for your county hospitals. If you get into a statewide program where there's, there's a few really big hospitals, and then there are some smaller hospitals, many times what we see in those programs is that those big hospitals will monopolize the program, they'll politicize it, they'll get what they want, and then the smaller hospitals within a county setting don't get that voice that they have on a local level. I'm not sure if I addressed your questions. I don't know that I can answer them fully satisfactory, but did I address them? You're welcome.
Like you said, it's only a year. We're going to have to do this every year, and I'm going to guess vote for it, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if it doesn't work out, and it doesn't sound like, you know, it's copacetic, then we don't, we don't do it again.
The county has to actually submit an application. It's called a fee and expenditure report to the state annually, and then the state has to submit the county's prefrontal document to the federal government for approval annually.
Commissioner Director Albrecht, Commissioners, my name is Amy Nassu. I am the President and CEO of Inspira Health, and for the purpose of the record, Inspira Health is located at fifteen oh five West Sherman Avenue in Vineland. I want to thank you for consideration of this very important issue and very important opportunity for the county. I want to thank Myers &amp; Stoffers for their, their good work. I will try and answer some of the questions to give context. I think the first part of the context is if you look, New Jersey sends in twelve billion, with a B, more dollars in federal revenue, federal taxes than we get back. This is part of the opportunity for us to level the playing field, to make sure that we get our fair share. In Cumberland County, we have not received our fair share. Forty-two percent of individuals who are served by our hospital at Inspira are either Medicaid or uninsured. This is a tremendous burden on both the county as well as on the hospital in trying to meet those needs. One of the reasons that this was structured in reference to the county dollars coming through is because each county operates its own Medicaid program and must and is responsible to make sure that all of those programs are supported. So as we hopefully will enroll more people in Medicaid, get people off the uninsured, get them in housing, most importantly, get them jobs to be able to stand on their feet, then we'll have less reliance. But you can't do that when you are getting less than forty-two cents on the dollar to cover all of these costs. It is a tremendous honor to care for the people of Cumberland County, and it's very important that we in Cumberland County not hold anything back in reference to getting opportunities to get our fair share. This is one of those ways to do that. I can share with you chapter and verse in reference to the dollars that we spend, and we know that individuals are having trouble. They're having trouble in reference to having housing, they're having trouble in transportation, they're getting the jobs, they're having trouble in reference to just making ends meet, especially after COVID. And I want to commend the county and the partnerships that we've had with the county trying to get people access to services and make sure we can help people get on their feet. Our responsibility is not just in reference to delivering healthcare. We know that based upon the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation annual studies that are done, Cumberland County shows up either last or next to the last in reference to health outcomes. And we have an opportunity to figure out ways together to do that. It's not only in reference to the care they receive once they're in the doors, it's everything that goes part of that. That means access to food, it means access to housing, it means access to jobs, and that requires this partnership. And we can't do that without our fair share of dollars. New Jersey has paid for everybody else long enough, and this is an opportunity for us to get our share back. I want to thank the county commissioners for considering this legis, considering this option today. I want to also thank our elected officials from Legislative Districts One and Three, who all stood by us and supported this legislation, understanding that this was a time for us to be able to get our share. So thank you all for your consideration.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Commissioner, do you have a question?
I have to have one. You said twelve billion dollars come out of the state.
Then we get back. And that's because of more transportation, you know, everything. Because we're one of those states, I mean, other poorer states in the country are getting seventy-five cents on the dollar. New Jersey is getting fifty cents on the dollar, but for those folks who are in the enhanced payment, enhanced payment program, then we get a little bit more for them. The commissioner asked the question about physicians. Many of our physicians in this community have had trouble staying in business, and we have all stepped up and employed those physicians to make sure that we can provide that opportunity. These dollars will not pay for those costs, this was specific to just hospital-based costs, but that's one of the other ways that we're trying to find ways to support it, to make sure we have enough docs to care for everybody. We now have a situation in our county that thirty percent of our physicians are eligible to retire, meaning that they'll be sixty-five in the next five years. We have to find opportunities to not only train the physicians as we currently do to stay in our community, but also provide those opportunities. And this is just one more way to be able to cover some of the losses, to be able to do that.
Do you agree with some of the funds that they're stating here?
Well, the, I will never try and talk against an auditor or a social worker. What I do know is that the dollars come directly, the funding comes directly from the hospital based upon what we provided, I believe, the year before or before that, I'm not sure how long the claims process works. So it comes, it's actually, it's calculated off the costs of what we spent. So it's not like it's, you can fudge numbers or anything else. It's, okay, you had Medicaid and uninsured coming the door, this is what your numbers are, you run it through that calculation that was just talked about, we put the money up upfront, and then in the back, you all, you know, the state gets its money, Medicaid gets its money, the payers get its money, and most importantly, the county gets your money, so you can continue to provide services. It's so essential for us to be able to get these folks the services they need.
So you feel the estimates are on target based on your, on your prices?
Well, based upon what we, what our total revenues are in reference to this population of folks that we provide care to. You only, you only get to calculate it after you provide the care.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any what else? Okay, thanks. Would someone like to make a motion to close the public?
So moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I have a motion in second that ordinance twenty twenty-three dash two be finally adopted?
So moved.
Second. Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Loods?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes.
The ordinance, the summary terms of which are included herein, has finally been adopted by the County of Cumberland, in the county, in the County of Cumberland, state of New Jersey, on May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, and the twenty-day period of limitation within which suit action or proceeding questioning the validity of such ordinance can be commenced as provided in the local bond law has begun to run from the date of the first publication of this statement. Copies of the full ordinance are available at no cost and during regular business hours at the clerk of the board's office for members of the general public to request the same.
All right. Can we open it for public comment, all the?
I try a motion in second.
Second.
All, all favor? Aye. All right. All right, can we open it to public for the, the consent agenda, any questions, the consent agenda or any, the agenda itself? And state your name and where you're from.
Sure. I'm sure. It's a sure.
Sorry.
Just lift it up.
It's too much.
Yes. It's just, they got it, they got it, they got it. Stick on it. He's got it. Sorry.
You want the?
My name's Carol Meyer, and I'm from Upper Deerfield. I come before the board tonight to support Resolution three seven six.
Would you speak into the mic?
Resolution design, or designating the month of June twenty twenty-three as Gun Safety and Violence Awareness Month. As of May eighth, twenty twenty-three, there have been two hundred and two mass shootings. The Gun Violence Archive tracked more than six hundred and forty-seven mass shootings in twenty twenty-two, and six hundred and ninety in twenty twenty-one. The effects of gun violence in America extend far beyond these casualties. Gun violence shapes the lives of millions of Americans who witness it, know someone who was shot, or live in fear of the next shooting. Gun violence is a national public health epidemic that exacts a substantial toll on the U.S. society. Gun violence includes homicide, violent crime, attempted suicide, suicide, and unintentional death and injury. The language in Resolution three seven six speaks about the opportunity to collectively pledge a unified decision in all municipalities of Cumberland County to promote gun safety and ending gun violence and gun-related incidents. This resolution also encompasses violences, violence in the schools, which, yes, and will teach children how to manage their emotions and conflict resolution skills. These skills can be instrumental in managing a situation and to keep individuals from making bad decisions. Peer pressure and social media bullying are impacting our children in a devastating scale. In order to have a cohesive plan, our county diversity must be addressed. We have heard the commissioners speak about separating gun safety and violence into two separate months. With all due respect, you can be properly trained, registered, permitted, taking courses, and there's still a chance that your weapon may discharge accidentally or be used in a shooting incident, or get into the hands of a mentally ill individual, or even one of your children, and be accidentally discharged, or used to retaliate to a bullying situation. Everyone needless death from a firearm is too many. Let's be honest, children can make mistakes with guns. Guns can be used to intimidate, especially in the hands of immature individuals. The prosecutor wants to promote positive programs and activities for responsible and safe gun ownership in conjunction with life skills. This resolution is not about limiting anyone's Second Amendment rights, it's about keeping guns out of the wrong hands and keeping illegal gun possession from proliferating in our community and promoting gun safety. You cannot logically deny that there is a national epidemic of violence in our country due to firearms, whether they be licensed, permitted, used for hunting, or illegal. The devastation is unprecedented, and dismissing this problem like it does not affect legal gun owners is just not facing the true reality at hand. In addition to the shooting epidemic, we are also experiencing many mental health issues. We cannot separate gun safety, violence, and mental health because it dilutes the effectiveness of a cohesive approach on how to work toward a solution. Recently, I attended my granddaughter's Saturday morning basketball game in Maryland. Walking into the building, I could not help but notice the medical supply stations hanging on the walls labeled clotting centers. They were compresses to stop the bleeding of a gun-inflicted wound. This in-your-face reality of what is happening is staggering. Our children are all suffering from PTSD. They've been training for shooter drills since they entered school. Nonpartisan democracy encourages politicians to work together, to find common ground, rather than to focus on advancing their own political agenda. I urge you to support Resolution three seven six and to vote for good governance, nonpartisan politics, commonality, not division. This resolution should not be separated into pieces. Thank you.
My comment is in reference to Resolution two zero two three three seven six, resolution designating the month of June twenty twenty-three as Gun Safety and Violence Awareness Month. First, removing the word gun from the resolution that is being proposed tonight to bring awareness to gun violence is self-serving, to say the least, and a slap in the face to all the lives taken and forever changed by gun violence in Cumberland County. A resounding theme in congressional gun violence awareness resolutions is to promote greater awareness of gun violence and gun safety. So we have education and we have awareness. We can no longer close our eyes to the fact that gun safety and gun violence are not mutually exclusive. Quite the opposite. Gun Violence Awareness Month is the precise time to introduce gun safety into the equation. Gun Violence Awareness Month is the precise time to introduce gun safety into the equation, thereby helping to reduce the number of violent gun deaths in our county. At the workshop meeting, Mr. Saleo, you stated, quote, "What can happen with a firearm can be violent," end quote. I agree. Guns are inherently violent, and whether it be hunting for sport, hunting for food, or a requirement to obtain a merit badge, there is a certain level of safety training involved. That may or may not be a requirement, but it is provided. The gun safety initiatives supported by this resolution are for kids who may not have the opportunity to belong to groups that promote gun safety. Unfortunately, their lived experiences may be on the gun violence side of the spectrum. The gun safety initiatives supported by this resolution educate the youth in gun safety and how it relates to gun violence epidemic in this country and county that our children are unfortunately acutely aware of, and this will provide meaningful action to combat gun violence in our communities. Mr. Saleo, you also mentioned violence can occur in many ways, and I agree with that also. An accidental shooting produces the same violence as an intentional shooting. Gun safety can help to reduce those accidental shootings. Weight washing over gun violence by removing the word "gun" fails to recognize the victims of gun violence. Not introducing gun safety as an integral part of gun violence, in my opinion, would be a missed opportunity, and as leaders of this county may reflect poorly on your ability to balance different ideologies. To deny the citizens of the county a fair and balanced leadership over semantics in this case could be deadly. There have been a number of county professionals and community partners whose work directly addresses local gun violence efforts, violence efforts, that have come before this board to urge you to support a resolution designating June 2023 as Gun Safety and Gun Violence Awareness Month. And tonight, I do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Acevedo. Just state your name and where you're from.
No problem. Good evening, everyone. My name is Laray Smith, and I'm from Commercial Township. We are a small, little quaint area. I sit on numerous of chairs and boards and boards of education, but I too am going to say about Resolution 2023-376, because people say, "Not in my backyard." Oh, this is not going on. Two weeks ago, AK-15 loaded was in Commercial Township. Gentleman strapped with it across his body. Four individuals behind him, which was his children, and eight individuals across at the playground witnessed him raising it, pointing it, showing it to everybody. And we're going to say, we don't need, this is not going on. It is going on. We need to wake up. We need to get the communities involved. We need to get Board of Educations involved. We need to get you involved and get out here at some of these places and realize this is real. This is nothing to play with. And if we don't educate them from child up and get them to understand now, they're going to be in your backyard, in your districts, and in your houses. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jennifer Webb-McRae. I reside in Violin, New Jersey, and I also am the Cumberland County Prosecutor. Tonight, I'm here on behalf of the Cumberland County Positive Youth Development Coalition, CCPYDC, and that is the first countywide juvenile delinquency prevention coalition, coalition in the state of New Jersey. We work on issues that keep kids safe out of the juvenile justice system and on their way to becoming responsible adults. I also chair the Positive Youth Development Work Group for this effort. June is Gun Safety and Violence Awareness Month throughout the country, and I am here tonight to ask you, as the board members, to re-declare June as Gun Safety and Violence Awareness Month in Cumberland County. I am proud to say that we were the first county in the state to declare it as such eight years ago, so this will be our eighth, eighth year if you approve it. I want to clearly state that Gun Safety and Violence Awareness Month is not a political statement about the right to bear arms. When I went around the 14 municipalities in the county the first year that we did this, I was very clear to state that we are not, we support the Constitution and the right to bear arms lawfully and safely. This is initiative, this is an initiative about possessing guns safely around children, teaching and empowering children what to do when they encounter a gun, which is to move away, not to touch it, and tell a responsible adult, and raising awareness about the dangers that firearms pose when they fall into the wrong hands. Firearms have now surpassed car accidents as the leading cause of death for children and teens in the United States. During my tenure since 2010, we lost a nine-year-old in the city of Bridgestone to gun violence, and we lost a 10-year-old in the city of Violin to gun violence. The issue of guns and violence is complex, and we need to come together to collectively find a solution to safeguard our children and our citizens. Action that educates our families about how to safely store firearms so that no child can get a hold of one and accidentally shoot themselves. Action that empowers parents to ask the hard question, "Do you have a firearm in your home? Do you safely possess it?" When they allow their kids to visit family and friends. Action that connects victims and their families and friends to resources to deal with the trauma and aftermath of a shooting so that they don't turn around and be, sometimes they're victims and then they become perpetrators. As well, as action that asks our young people to pledge not to pick up a gun to resolve conflict. These may seem like small actions, but great change always starts small. It starts with conversations and then empowering people to make the change that we want to see. June as Gun Safety and Violence Awareness Month works to increase awareness of the community resources that we have here in our community, strengthen the connection to local law enforcement, and galvanize support for decreasing gun deaths, whether they be lawful ownership that results from accidents, mental health suicides, or criminality. We invite everyone in our community to participate in this effort. To kick off the month's activity, on Friday, June 2nd through Sunday, June 4th, we are going to have a Wear Orange event. Everyone can participate. They can wear orange, they can post to social media, and start the conversation about gun safety and gun violence awareness. We are also hosting our seventh annual Countywide Coffee with a Cop event on Saturday, June 17th. That will be at the Violin Flea Market. The sheriff who's here participates, Violin, Bridgestone, and Millville Police Departments participate, New Jersey State Police will be participating as well. We also will be having four health and safety corner store events, and I will post this on our Facebook page in Violin, Bridgestone, and Millville. Our chaplains will be there, and our police departments will be donating gun locks to hand out at those events. All of these events will be posted on our social media page. Lastly, all month long, we will be posting gun safety and violence awareness factories along with helpful resources right here in our community on our social media channels to keep this conversation going about June Gun Safety and Violence Month. So I am asking the board to consider re-de declaring countywide June as Gun Safety and Violence Awareness Month. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. I have taken great pains over my eight years to make sure that this community knows that I am not making a statement on whether it's, we should possess guns or not possess guns. My husband possesses guns in my home. He always tells me to respect them, not fear them, but we absolutely, as a community, should be having a conversation about the safe handling of guns and the remnants of gun violence in our community. Thank you.
Ms. McCrae, just before you finish, can you give us just an idea how much the gun violence was used, illegal firearms or legal firearms were used in our crime? Is there a breakdown?
Well, I don't have those stats right in front of me, but
That's fine.
Obviously, there is a lot of illegal gun ownership. We have an issue with guns coming from the southern region up the 95 corridor into our community, and no one who is not lawfully able to possess a gun, a gun should do so.
It's illegal to have an illegal gun, right?
Absolutely. However, that same conversation needs, we need to have a discussion about the safe handling of guns, because I am aware of guns being stolen from cars. I'm aware of guns being stolen from homes, so we have to talk about that as well. And thankfully, and I don't even want to say it.
Do you approach that, do you actually approach this as a subject? Do you approach that subject with the people that you're actually encountering?
Yes, we talk, we talk about all of those topics. And, you know, in the law enforcement business, the sheriff will tell you, "We knock on wood. I don't want to bring anything into existence, but if I can do anything in my power to go anywhere around this county and talk about gun safety so no child accidentally gets harmed by a gun, I want to do that as well."
That sounds like a problem with responsible gun ownership, too, don't you think?
Well, that's part of the conversation, talking about responsible gun ownership. I had, you know, I was a child, I grew up in this community, my family had guns. I had a grandfather who said to me, as I got older and in law school, "Why would I lock it up? I need to be able to get to it if there's, there's a problem." And then we had the conversation about the fact that I had baby cousins coming through my, our household, and would any of us want to be responsible for not being safe? And that small conversation changed the way he handled guns in our home. So we want to have open and honest conversations about how dangerous guns can be in the wrong hands, which includes children, and empower people to handle them safely, legally, and responsibly.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone? Yeah, okay.
Talking about Resolution 316, the very first one, reauthorizing the contract to send prisoners up to Hudson County. This was talked about at least two to three, three months ago. And I'd like to know, well, the last time we talked about this type of a subject, we were told that our jail was, was going to be worked on and upgraded and made available. Let me know about that, if you would. Do you, bear with me.
Oh, dude, sorry.
Let me know if, in fact, we'll go through this entire contract, or if these people will end up in our jail soon. That's, that's, that's one thing. Also.
Can I answer that part of it, or?
No.
No? Okay.
And, and at the same time previously, there was a very large conversation about the prison that was abandoned, and I've heard nothing more about it, and I would appreciate some kind of an idea of what's happening, what's going on, what's it going to cost us? Because it sounded like it was going to cost us, taxpayers, an awful lot of money. And I would like to know if I'm right or wrong, or if, what's going to happen with this? Are we going to get a jail?
Okay, well, let's, let me take the first part. The, the first part, why, why are we doing a contract with Hudson County again? Because we, we've approached two counties. One was OSHA County and SAIL. Right now, we have Hudson already, we're set in prison. We approached both those. We found out both of them aren't ready to handle any of our inmates. They, they don't have enough staff, or they don't, their areas not are open yet, so, so that kind of shot that in the foot. We, Hudson, at the time, was trying, basically going to send all our inmates back about Jude. Oh, we're going to get all our inmates back. And all of a sudden, their plans fell through, and they walk in with us and open arms again. Their cost is actually lower than the rest of them. So we were like, well, they're there now, we'll stick with it. Our own jail, we are fixing it up. We, we've been painting, doing electrical work, plumbing. If you see some of the contracts we've got, we are fixing to expand how many people we can handle it. It's a slow process, and it also dictated by how many employees we have to do that. So right now, we're 100, the goal was to get up to 250. It's going to be a while to do that, but if we get to 1/4, 150, we're, the more we get these pods fixed, we can consolidate where our inmates are, and then that means our employees could be closer together, and we don't need as many, because our building is pretty big that we have. We are talking, we are looking, well, yes, about Southern State. We did ponder Southern State. Actually, I probably was a big fan of doing Southern State, but it's not practical. And we kind of got off that area and looked at, the only thing, at the time, the only thing we could control is our own place, the only, which you, it's the concrete pad we have to do what we originally decided to do, to build a jail there. Since then, some things have come up that may be more interesting that are happening as we speak. We're going to look at it. We're not going to take, for years and years to make a decision. We're going to look at it because we, we have a responsibility to the taxpayers to look at them, and if they're a better fit or a better cost, then we're going to go that way. If not, our option is to build our own jail where we designated originally to do it. These talks are going on as we speak, have been very fruitful. We, we've put the ball in some of their, in their ballpark, they're pondering it. We're not ready to say, but if they, we're pondering, and we have a consultant that we're waiting to get back numbers from at the same times, but we aren't stopping. We're continuing to plug and ask questions and see if we, see if we can pull this off. The goal is to be the most reasonable to taxpayers possible. That's the goal, and get what we need done for the long term so we're not in this position, no commissions, in this position, five, six, seven, 10 years down the road where we are now. It's a, it's a, we're trying to make a decision that no commissioner will have to face this again. That's the goal, at the most reasonable price, so.
One more question.
Sure, I hope I answered that question.
You did, you did, thank you. Has it ever been determined, can we talk about who put the kibosh on the original jail?
I can't share that, but if we did, we, I can't share that, but we did, we are, we have filed. It's all going good. I can't, sorry. Sorry, but it's out there. And actually, when we can, and I've done this before to you, when I can, I will ask you to come up and tell you where we're at with it, so.
Thanks, appreciate it.
You have about four options for who to say.
Three, three options, three options. So, sorry, you've been waiting patiently, so state your name and where you're from.
All right, my name is Amelia Holmes. I'm a resident in Commercial Township. I am a 14-year-old, and I currently attend Marsh River Township Elementary School and previously attended Haleyville Commercial Township Elementary. I would like to talk about the Resolution 2023-376 and my experience with it. Within my school, it has become a joke about gun violence of, oh, I'm going to bring a gun to school because you said that and things like that, and because these kids do not take gun violence seriously enough. It is a joke on social media as well. I have seen it all over TikTok, Instagram, YouTube, of people being in lockdowns and the kids from UK terrified, and it's saying that the kids from US are like, no, this isn't my first time doing this. It is a problem, and I feel it needs to be solved. I, a 14, should not be scared of going to school and wondering if I'm going to be home the next day safe with my mom. And it has seriously not been taken seriously enough by my classmates and student mates within my school, so I just wanted to share what my experience is like.
I have one question. What do you feel is the reason why they're not taking firearms as a serious?
What do you feel is the reason why they're not taking firearms as a serious?
So within my community of, which is also partially Marsh River Township, we have a lot of hunting people. So a lot of these kids are exposed to guns, but not as so much in the negative way they're exposed to it with hunting deer, turkeys, things like that. So they don't see the actual consequence of how it can impact an entire family and take a life. So they have not been exposed to or taught correctly the actual threats and risks of touching a gun, playing with one, and not properly, if you find one, not properly taking care of it and telling the adults.
And these are the parents you feel that are responsible partially for this?
It's overall just authorities and awareness towards the children. We are not taught in our schools about, we don't have assemblies of, if you find a gun, what should you do with it? Like, it is not brought to us, we have to seek it out. Some people do not have the availability to go to the events that, like, the prosecutors held that I have gone to, and so they are just not taught because it is not brought to us in our curriculum, things like that, so we don't seek it out.
Why is it not taught, why is it not taught? The prosecutors doesn't come to your school, or?
Um, no, I, no, we do not have somebody. We've had assemblies about drug awareness and recycling and things like that, but we've never had somebody come to our school and say, don't touch a gun, it could take somebody's life and ruin it. And if, maybe teachers have dabbled on the topic sometimes because some, a kid said a comment, but they, they don't teach it to us enough, and it is not brought enough to our attention that, how serious it is to handle a gun.
Would you like to have somebody come into school and basically give some type of lessons on how serious gun ownership is and, and gun awareness is?
Yes, I would absolutely love that. We have a part of our curriculum for our health classes, we are taught the effects of alcoholism, drugs, things like that, the alcohol, the Vito Alcohol Syndrome, things like that. If we brought in the effects of guns and what it has done to people and how it has changed our lives, I think my, my student, my classmates would actually be able to understand what it can actually do and how it can completely change your life.
Amanda, thank you very much for getting this. It's always been a question, a deal from a real-time perspective, and I want to give kudos to the prosecutor for being proactive in bringing this issue to the fore. Thank you, Madam.
I have a question, Madam Prosecutor.
Let's, let's hear that. State your name and where you're from, that's all.
Gary Moore from Millville. And I wanted to talk quickly, a couple of Resolutions, 350, 351. Last November, I came here and was complaining about all the outside legal contracts, even though we have in-house legal counsel, and Dean Hawke and Nancy raised concerns about that. So you might be surprised I'm actually going to come here and be glad that you're doing this with hiring this outside legal counsel, because I think this relates back to the press release you had last month. And in that press release, with some really stark numbers, I didn't read any newspaper articles about this, but there should have been, that we had a bond to build a jail, and we basically spent about half the money not building a jail. And that's pretty concerning, and it's too concerning just for a new administration like this one to just say, well, that was a past administration, we have to move on. Because no matter what you do with a jail, you're already in the hole by quite a bit because of this. So it's 16.5 million that was spent, and there's another 6 million that's being claimed in litigation. So that's too much money to, there not be accountability for the people that came before and the people that are responsible for this. So I wish you good luck, and I'm glad to see counsel being hired to try and get to the bottom of this, because, like you said, people 10 years from now shouldn't have to go through that again. And if we don't do something about this, other administrations probably will, because there's a sign here that says, come to Cumberland County, and you can get a lot of money not building a jail. So thank you.
We're trying to support you. Thank you.
Thank you.
State your name.
Good evening. Mindy Patrani, Hopewell Township and the beloved Upper Deerfield Township. Resolution 2023-348, the county is going to give the Bridgeton Zoo 30,000, I believe. Is this for just operating costs? Is that like a flat amount that you typically give to the zoo?
We, we've given that every year, been on this board, they give it $30,000.
Okay. I'm not here on behalf of anyone, just a pure Bridgeton, born and raised resident that is slowly watching our zoo and the park areas go to decay. The pedestrian bridge that is at the entrance of the zoo was closed off in 2021. It was taped off, and now it's totally been disconnected from the raceway. That little pedestrian bridge has a lot of nostalgia for many, that there's tons of initials carved in it. It's also the throughway to get to the raceway where my father walked that raceway for 30 years, 10 miles, five times back and forth. And so he's not the only one. The other part of the park is the, what was, they're now being strangled to death, the rhododendrons and the azaleas that have been planted in the park. They hacked back at some of them. Some of those plants are very unique. My father also grew rhododendron, so it's something sweet and dear to my heart. Edgar Joyce donated all those plants, and it's all going to crap, excuse me. We've talked about expanding park recreation through the county, and I'm hereby requesting that Bridgeton be your first stop in, in getting some monies to fix these things. I reached out to the administrator at Bridgeton, and evidently, they submitted a grant application to replace that current wooden pedestrian bridge with a 41-by-8-foot steel truss pedestrian bridge to the tune of $247,500. Do I know that those numbers are good numbers? No, I don't, because you know I question numbers. I know that there's beef in them. Is someone suggested through the Facebook post, maybe the original bridge that's sitting there could somehow be a project for the CC Tech? And not so much as making it functional to, to use for a pedestrian walkthrough, but maybe to make it part of the park in that area that pictures could be taken? It's got a lot of memories. It's just like the violent utility, electric utility sign, okay? People treasure those kind of things. I think we put a lot of monies into different things, programs, and everybody has their special wants. How about we just try to maintain some of the beauty in our area and maintain the assets that are already here? And that's all I had to say about that. So if you, if there's a way that you can give some money, or?
Well, I'll give you a little history that, real quick, that, that, that I've said from day one, when I was first elected, I always said, I'll, I'll do 30,000 this year, but if they don't become part of a county-wide park system in the future, that, that number will be, sorry, will not be spent again. We're working our way, and actually, if we pull it off, because right now, it's being studied, the Cohansy Greenway idea from Fairton all the way up, even going up to Mary Elmer Lake, talking to do Hopewell, their, their Barrett Rudd connects somewhere up there, go all the way to the Yavish Park. So everything you're kind of saying, hopefully, kind of comes to fruition if we all work together, the city of Bridgeton. The park is the city of Bridgeton, but if we go right through it, we, it could be something special. It should be something special. So, so all those, the things you're saying, when the time comes, when this plan is put together, or is it, we like it, or this commission believes it's something we should pursue, I hope you kind of bring that up again, and maybe the 30,000 wouldn't be 30,000, it could be a lot more, because we got a, a goal or mission, and they're right in the middle of it. Even including, sorry, even including the, the southern part of Bridgeton, which as a key part of that, the walkway all the way to the Cohansy Guttrug, the old one, is all green areas that it, it's part of a whole idea of the western side. We have a play on the eastern side, that western side being tied into the park. So yes, down the road, I hope, yeah, I would like to vote for more, we're doing it for the, we're actually doing some comprehensive, yes, so.
I'm glad to hear, I'm glad to hear that. As someone who grew up in Bridgeton City Park, graduating from Bridgeton High School, that was a major place, and the potential is unlimited with that park. And everything you highlighted is exactly the way a lot of people feel. So hopefully, there will be some collaborative action, just as the director stated, so we can make that a showpiece. It's, it's an amazing potential, that whole Cohansy River, straight from the bay, right all the way up, as he said. The potential is there to make it an amazing attraction. So thank you so much for raising that issue. You may be want to cry a little bit, especially with the way it's coming.
Well, no, it's incidental. I mean, I grew up there. You know, my kid, my dad took me there as a kid into the zoo for, you know, and even like the playground looks nothing like the playground used to look like. And, and I'm not one that is a stickler for change. Change can be very good, but sometimes we have to hold on to the very true assets that we have, and we're not maintaining them. So if any help can be set that way, he, he said he applied for some grant, but I, I didn't go further, because that's not my department, but just trying to get awareness. We did try to get a bunch of volunteers last year to go in and trim the rhododendrons, because I can prune them. And at the time, the person that was in charge of recreation wanted us to sign a release, and they wanted the exact times that we were going to be there. We're volunteering, so I'm, I'm okay signing a release, but I'm going to go down when I want to go down, not like a structured time, and we're all on different schedules, so. I just wanted, one other thing, Commissioner Saleo, you had asked something about illegal guns. New Jersey Gun Stat Reports is provided by the New Jersey State Police. It showed that 80% of the 485 gun-related deaths, including accidents, suicides, and homicides in New Jersey involved out-of-state guns, not in-state. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good for you.
Amelia, I called you Amanda, and I apologize. I just, I couldn't wait to get it out, but thank you again.
Good evening again. I'm Nancy Ridgeway from Upper Deerfield and Fairfield Townships. On Resolution 2023-376, a resolution designated the month of June 2023 as Gun Safety and Violence Awareness Month. At the work session, a couple of commissioners had some comments to make about this, and I'm going to make some comments about it. If you're not concerned about it, why do we have security at our meetings? That we have to take everything out of our pockets, get wound down? If you're not worried about gun safety and violence, we don't need the sheriff's officers. So we could save some money with that. Well, really. The other thing about it is, we really need this. And I'm going to put my age out there. 45 years ago, I was the first resident in the city of Bridgeton. The kids fired a gun into my apartment, almost killing my mother. 45 years ago. This isn't something new. This has been going on for a long time, and you really need this education. Seriously, the young lady that got up here, she told you, they need it in the schools. They really need it. The kids are bad. Kids are bad today. And like somebody said, it might be your house next. You're not immune from it. You can't run from it. People are driving down 95 and getting shot at. It can happen to anybody. And the only other thing on this I want to say is, so you're really concerned about the Second Amendment of the Constitution of the United States of America? I wish you would be concerned about all of them. Maybe you wouldn't have as many lawsuits as you do. I'll get off that horse, it's been beaten. Resolution 2023-346, a resolution authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the New Jersey Department of Human Services to implement the County Option Hospital Fee Have a lot of talk about this tonight. It will provide participating counties with new revenue resources. I like that. New revenue resources. Coming, county is always looking for revenue. We're broke, you know that, don't you? You know the county's broke. We don't have any money. The county shall retain 9% of the proceeds of the fee for its discretionary use. Very nice. You can do anything you want with it. Well, I have a few suggestions. Possible uses of the hospital tax. County share 9% for discretionary use. Can we use it for ANCOR replacements? That's the state psychiatric hospital. Healthcare, medical, and behavior health for inmates, because billing Medicaid is not allowed while an inmate is in custody? Also, we'd like to have an explanation of how slash why county pays for psychiatric hospital space at ANCOR. Is it for involuntary commitments? Involuntary commitments hearings include a patient, patient's rights representative.
Ms. Ridgeway, you.
That would be the county adjuster in every county. Why is the county adjuster in Coming County an employee of the county clerk's office? Can we get more information into about their job duties at a future meeting? Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Ridgeway. Any what else? Do I have a motion, a, a motion to close the public, public comment?
Some of us. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll move it to, we have a motion to move it to, to look at the consent agenda.
Can I have a motion and a second to vote by consent agenda on Resolutions 2023-3-316 through 2023-364?
Some of us. Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Do I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolutions 2023-316 through 2023-364 by consent agenda? Commissioner Pearson.
Uh, yes, to all except, I'm abstaining from 355 and 356.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-196, resolution rescinding Resolution 2022-654, awarding a contract for 2021 TTF road program, city of Millville, Cumberland County, New Jersey, bid number 22-49, and authorizing the resubmission of bid number 22-49. Do I have a motion and second?
Some of us.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-365, resolution declaring one, 2010 Ford Crown Victoria as surplus and unneeded property, and authorizing the sale of said vehicle to Upper Deerfield Township. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
I just want to make a comment about that. You're, you're going to see some of this, because we have some, uh, we've had some requests lately from different townships, and including the fire police. Some vehicles that are actually parked and deteriorated are a lot. Uh, they usually go to .gov. Uh, we've actually, by doing this, we're actually helping some of our townships, uh, meet some of their needs that, and a vehicle that we have retired. So just to let you know, it's covered down low. So, yes.
Resolution 2023-366, resolution awarding contract for supplying and delivering paper goods and miscellaneous janitorial items to Cumberland County, bid number 23-17. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Uh, Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-367, resolution exercising second option to renew contract for providing one-stop operator to coordinate the New Jersey One-Stop Career Centers in the Cumberland-Salem Kate May Workforce Development Area, RFP 21-11. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Madam Clerk, excuse me, did I miss 196?
Bottom of page 11.
Bottom of page.
It's the first one you did.
I might myself.
I have the Commissioner Capazola.
Got it. It's good.
Yeah.
One second.
It's good, it's good.
Thank you.
Resolution 2023-368, resolution authorizing the submission of a project proposal to New Jersey Transit for NJJRC Grant Program. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musso? Oh, sorry. Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-369, resolution amending Resolution 2023-305, a resolution amending and authorizing the award of a non-fair and open professional service contract for engineering service support for the P-25 700 MHZ Digital Trunked Radio System for Greenwich, Cedarville, J.C. Plaza Engineering, and Bidland Water Tank. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Just a comment before, because I was told that two weeks ago, that I promised something that wasn't delivered, which our 700 system is in the process. It won't be completed completely by August, which is what I said. But we, this is part of the next, getting this thing done, and it is proceeding. We'll put the pieces in place. So we, it will be operating, it just won't be complete until all these towers are put up and run it, so. Uh, yes.
Resolution 2023-370, resolution granting approval to submit a grant application and execute a grant agreement with the New Jersey Department of Human Services for the SFY24 Jail Medication Assisted Treatment Reentry Initiative. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-371, resolution exercising first option to renew contracts for providing supportive services and transportation for children, adults, and families funded by the Cumberland County Department of Human Services, Human Services Advisory Council, RFP 22-22. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-372, resolution exercising first option to renew contracts for providing supportive services and transportation for children, adults, and families funded by the Cumberland County Department of Human Services, Human Services Advisory Council, RFP number 22-22 resubmission. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-373, resolution approving various change orders to contracts for providing supportive services and transportation for children, adults, and families funded by the Cumberland County Department of Human Services, Human Services Advisory Council. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-374, resolution approving various change orders to contracts for providing supportive services and transportation for children, adults, and families funded by the Cumberland County Department of Human Services, Human Services Advisory Council, resubmission 22-22. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-375, resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract to provide voting machine programming, testing, and support services for primary election and November general election. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved. Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Just a comment on this, that the, we, the last, it's good to see this, because I think the last time it came up, we were kind of blindsided because the, of the fear, the cost in the last minute. So it's good that it said it's upfront, out ahead of time, which is great, because we can deal with it. So I appreciate that. So thanks. And I, yes.
Resolution 2023-376, resolution designating the month of June 2023 as Gun Safety and Violence Awareness Month. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
I like to make a comment. And I, and I say to the prosecutor, I appreciate how
it's written this time, more than anything. It is absolutely correct. People have to be aware and trained and understand that firearms are not to be played with. And as long as, and I, my point is, it got people up here that a gun is a tool, and it has to be taught just like any other tool, to be used correctly and purposely, and can be, and in the right hands. And that's the, my, my point is that a lot of these gun violence stuff that's happening are not guns regu, are illegal. And if the law, if our, New Jersey's strict enough, that if we enforce the law, maybe some of these violent acts may not happen. Uh, I applaud that we're doing this. I'm glad we, we are ahead of the curve of what our eighth year we're doing this. I'm very pleased we're doing this. Uh, but I would encourage more groups to be trained, to understand what a firearm is and how it's used, so that they would use it correctly, not simple thing, and not pointing at it, or playing with it, or joking about it, because it's not a joke. Uh, I, and I cite organization, I, I'm not a gun owner. I, I'm no, no desire really to be a gun owner. I never will. Actually, the last time I made a statement on this, I found out all the other commissioners on the board were gun owners, except me. So, which surprised me when we did support the Second Amendment, which I do. Um, I, I just, uh, I, there are organizations that teach gun safety, and maybe we should get them more involved with that week than anything to show that, that, how important that that is, gun safety. And I, I know the prosecutor, it's our heart is in the right place, and I, and you can see it, to make sure that we don't have any single incident in this county. And someday, maybe we'll get there. But it's not just because of gun, it's, it's, it's many things. There's one tool, it's another. Guns is the, uh, the potential for violence is much higher with a gun than other things. But, um, all the things that many of the speakers said, that, uh, making sure they're put away right, or locked up, or can't be used, or not, uh, that a kid could get a hold of it, doesn't understand. Uh, I'll give you the story, and I apologize, but a glass of wine, people, Italian ancestry would say that, you know, a glass of wine at dinner, a, a little bit, the kid understood that that was accepted, that, hey, you can have a little glass, and that's it. That it was acceptable to understand that, that alcohol is not a good thing, taking equality. But other, the right circumstance is good. I'm equating guns with alcohol, just saying that, that it was no big deal to have a glass of wine at dinner.
Not together.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Don't sweat. But the, the bottom line, it was no big deal to have a glass of wine, and that's the way it should be, that it's no, guns, if it's taught right, or understood, it's no big deal, if it's decide, if it's part of a greater, a greater program. But I, I strongly, again, the illegal guns, we should be prosecuting people, we should be going after them. Uh, Commissioner Quinn made a statement a year ago, or two years ago, when they were talking, that he made a statement on the steps of a house, a very bad house in the city of Millville. He went up on the porch, and he's making a statement about gun violence, and this is the worst house in the city of Millville. And he was pulled off that, by the sheriff's department pulled him off, because it was, he, they thought it was too dangerous to stand there. And my first reaction was, well, if they knew that people had guns in that audience, and that, listening to speak, arrest them. And, and it was, and I understand, I'm not put in the sheriff's department, I'm in a terrible position, but, but arrest them, instead of having a guy, a commissioner speaking, fear for his life. And I don't, I'll say this, I don't live in a vacuum. I, I live in this county. I, I, I'm in center-city violent. I work every day. I, I've had people shootings happen in, in my, near where I work. It, it happens. So I don't know, every member of this commission lives in this community. So it's, there's no vacuum. We don't live in some gated community, none of us. So we understand what's going on. We have to understand. We live here. So, and we experience, and we have our own feelings about things. We disagree about certain things, and other things we do not, because of our experience in this county. So, so remember that when you're, when you're saying, I, I, so, I just want to say that, and I have no problem with it, all right? So thank you. Yes.
Resolution 2023-377, resolution authorizing an agreement between Cumberland County for the Office on Aging and Disabled and Fairfield Township for the purpose of supporting a senior nutrition program at the site of the Fairfield Township Senior Center. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved. Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes, but I want to say this comment. I pulled this off to make sure that I thought Fairfield, why, why are we doing it just for them? They are actually coming back on the program, which is very, uh, great, that they're coming back on the program. So thank you.
Resolution 2023-378, resolution authorizing a shared service agreement between the County of Cumberland and participating governing bodies for the street cleaning services. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved. Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
I'll make another comment. This is a result of talking to the township, uh, they're actually, organization the CDC, the western side, their economic development unit, who the townships are facing, again, unfunded mandate by the state of New Jersey, and we're kind of stuck, how they're going to buy a machine, which I think they cost like $150,000, document this, which you may not have an employee to do the documentation, do the paperwork. And of course, the state of New Jersey figures, everybody's got staff sitting all over the place, have nothing to do. Uh, they asked the county to step forward to see if they could help do the store water management. And I found out, which our employees actually wrote a program, document where they're cleaning, and I was like, wow. And on their phone, so when we, and we said, we can step forward with our machines to clean the drains in this county, and document what area, document where we're at, so the state of Jersey could get their report that we're doing this. The, the shared service part of it, that the townships agreed to compensate our employee while they're doing their streets. I, I thought it was pretty cut and dry. I thought it would, it would work. And again, it's this commission saying that we, we will help where we can, our townships, when they need help. And I, upon our public works for divulging that information, which I thought was pretty neat, that we have a program that does that. So, uh, so this is not, this is the second one. It's not the last one. And when we hear that the townships need help, and we can help, we will help. So that's why we're here. So, thanks. And I, uh, yes.
Resolution 2023-379, resolution waiving application fee to be paid by the Cooperative Fair Association for use of the Cumberland County Fairgrounds for 2023 Cumberland County Fair. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Um, yeah, let me make a comment to this one. I apologize. But I, I like you guys to understand why. We are waiving this fee. It's going to be the, we're not going to do this every year. The Fairgrounds is an independent organization. They, uh, they, they run the fair, they make money. I hope they make money, and being how successful it was last year, I'm pretty sure. We are putting all the circumstances in place to make our middle park, our fairgrounds, special. And it just, if you guys went last year, how long's it prove? We're not done. It's going to be something pretty special when we're done. We are actually looking at plans, and our, our commissioner lays on, on top of it. We will, this is a fair, the Fair Ground Association is the start. They were the ones that kept this thing going. So we're going to support them every which way, but in, but in the end, they will, they will be part of every other group that will fund, kick money back on what to, so we can do more things at our parks. And this is the beginning. This is the, the starting point. So, uh, yes.
Resolution 2023-380, resolution authorizing the execution of a grant agreement and acceptance of funds for the FY23 County Reentry Coordinators Program. Motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
I, I could say a lot, but I'll just say yes. So.
Resolution 2023-381, resolution approving budget amendment FY2023 County Reentry Coordinators Program, $100,000. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-382, resolution requesting permission for the dedication by Ryder for a recreation trust fund as required by NJSA 40:48-2.56. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-383, resolution approving change order number one to contract for providing various social services for the Cumberland County Youth Services Advisory Council Community Living Enrichment Program, RFP number 22-62. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-384, resolution authorizing assignment of all contract negotiations involving New Jersey Civil Service Association, Cumberland County Council 18, to the firm of Blaney, Donahue, and Weinberg, PC. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved. Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Uh, we'll make a comment on this. And the bottom line is that we are trying a new offer to tackle these negotiations. Uh, we, they have been assigned different ones. Uh, we will, uh, work as we normally do, see how they do, and go from there. But they're, they, so far, the comments I've gotten from the unions they're talking to, or not talked to yet, that they, the opening part of it, they're very happy how it's going. So hopefully, they keep that up, and we get real good positive feedback, and that means that we get quick results of what we're trying to do, uh, that there's an open dialogue between our unions, and it makes everything go easier. So, and yes. And yes.
Resolution 2023-385, resolution authorizing grant agreement with the New Jersey Department of Military and Veterans Affairs for transportation services for veterans for the period of July 1, 2023 to June 30, 2024. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved. Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Loews.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-386, resolution authorizing letter of support for a private use helipad permit at property known as block 125.01, lot 15.03, City of Millville. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Loews.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
I will make a comment about this also, this is actually a cooperative effort to City of Millville who needed something done quickly and this commission has responded, they have already approved it, looked at it, and of course, the county had to sign off on it, we did. And we did it in record time, I applaud the administration getting it done and stayed on top, we make sure we signed it, so, thank you and yes.
You just wanted to ride on the helicopter.
I wanted to ride on the helicopter, that's right.
Resolution 2023-387, resolution authorizing settlement in the matter of, in the matter of Brooks Disciplinary Appeal Superior Court of New Jersey Appellate Division, docket number A-001928-21TI. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Loews.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-388, resolution authorizing and approving settlement with Timothy Butler in the matter of consolidated appeals pending in the Office of Administrative Law, OAL docket CSV 15370-18 and CSV 08365-20. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo.
Yes.
Commissioner Loews.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes. Why you want to do the treasure report?
With pleasure. So we began in the month of April with a balance of $27,982,586.4. Cash received $6,930,280. Cash dispersed $12,771,987.25. That any balance of $22,141,201.59. Attached to the treasures report is a list of itemized investments, of which they total And then a couple CDs that the clerk's office has of $200,000. Motion second, you can vouch for all.
Mr. Ridgeway, basically that we have money in the bank, you told me.
A little bit.
Okay. All right.
Now that the budget's adopted last month, I'm going to start attaching to the treasures reports, budget reports, so you can see where the spending is at every single month and then we'll do a revenue report too.
Okay, thank you.
I'll start story some less now.
Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
All favor.
Do I have a motion and second for authorizing payment of all salaries and wages?
So moved.
Second.
All favor.
Do I have a motion and second to open public comment?
All favor. Anyone would like to just make a comment in general, please just state your name and where you're from and you have five minutes.
I want to talk briefly about the former VOTech school, Gary Moore Mill, that is in Deerfield Township. It's been, I believe vacant since 2016. There's nothing in there that I know of, when I drive by, it looks vacant to me. And at one time, there was a proposal to build a data center there with solar energy. I don't believe that ever went anywheres. More recently, I found that there is a company that uses that address, 601 Bridgeton Avenue, which is the old former VOTech school, and the company's name is Wonderlanded Production Last February, Wonderlanded Production Services got a $24 million tax credit from the New Jersey Economic Development Authority. It was by far the largest tax credit that the New Jersey Economic Development Authority gave out. I opened NJEDA to try and find out more about this company. What they're supposed to be doing is, wait for it, they're supposed to be making a movie here in Deerfield Township with a $68 million budget and it is going to be a remake of Alice in Wonderland. That was 15 months ago. I have not seen any media coverage about any movie being made here. The building is still owned by the county. So, we still own that building. I find it a little bit alarming that a company could use a public building to then get a $24 million tax break to build, make a movie that I don't see any movie being made here at the moment. I remember in 1974, there was a movie made here and it was all over the news. It starred Chloris Leachman and Cindy Williams and...
Mr. Moore, if you don't mind, we'll ask some questions right now, once we can get an answer. And there actually, there's been several movies been made in this county.
Yeah.
The building is, the building is owned by the Cumberland County Improvement Authority.
Right.
And that is controlled by a different board than us. They have a different executive director than we have a business administrator.
We have a...
The legislators are in our, they are, the authority liaison is in our...
I will definitely raise the issue.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Presarchi, do you have any comment? Have you heard a movie be made in the county?
No, not yet.
And we are having a...
Did you say Wonderland? What's the company's, how's it spelled?
I drive in a truck all day. Okay, so Mr. Moore, your question, your question, we don't know, we do have a movie, kind of, we're trying to have a movie division or office in the county and we, it's always looked at our tourism, but that's, I, we haven't heard nothing, so, all right?
That's interesting.
All right, so, yeah, okay.
I just have one parting comment, I'd like to thank all the commissioners for coming to, Carol Meyer from Upper Deerfield, I'm sorry, for coming to a common sense decision and working together in a nonpartisan fashion for the common good of the county and the welfare of our children. Thanks so much.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Good evening, Lorraine Smith, Commercial Township. To the sitting commissioners, I really would like to just say one thing. I know we hear the news, things aren't good, but we as a county in general, we are in a situation where people want to hear our voice, they want to know that their social security check will still be able to come. The veterans want to know that they'll still be able to get the veterans' benefits that they normally get. People who get Medicaid or Medicare want to know that they're safe and secure. We may be poor here, but we're working class people. We are a community that needs to unite together, but also, we need to show some comfort to people right now. And during these dire times, as a committee, it's time for your voices to be heard and let them know and be humbled and let them feel that you care, that you genuinely care. We have probably a high population of the veterans' population, those on Medicaid and Medicare. We have to show them, not talk about it behind board meetings and little things like that. I don't know if you could do some type of press release or something showing regardless of what's going on in the world and what happens with the deficit and what they decide, you have this community's back. Because our low-income people are feeling it, but they're not feeling the love from you. So they need to hear from you. And I'm saying that as a resident, I'm saying that as an employee, I'm saying that as a Board of Education member, I'm saying that as a chair. I go out and knock on doors, I know my community, I know the demographics. We're a little old commercial township, but I'm just here to tell you, people are hurting and it's time for us to unite and comfort them and not comfort them behind our desks. We have to get out here and show them. We have food pantries and things of that nature, but maybe we need, you need to show publicly that you're going to write to legislation to support things that's going to support them. So I would think, would hopefully request this, whether it gets done or not, I'm just going to make sure that it's on record that it's needed, our families need this.
Do you have any concrete things you would like to add here, you're being very general?
I haven't added a lot of things in my community, but in general, right now, what I'm going to...
You're asking for awareness, you want people to be aware?
I want the people in this community and in our township to be aware that we are going to have their backs. As leaders, right now, things are tight. Food stamps got cut, ATM card, all those things, everything got reduced. But if you look on the news, it's a bigger picture, but the picture is affecting them too.
Well, things didn't get reduced, things went back to the way they were before, pre-pandemic. However, I would love to get a press release out and I wish that we had a newspaper that would cover it, but unfortunately, our last remaining writer got reassigned.
That's right.
So what we do is we actually do go out to the people, we go to the events, we go to their homes, we go in their neighborhoods, and I can speak for everyone on this board, Republican and Democrat, that I know we all do that. So I appreciate that you feel that way and that you're carrying the message for people because that's what this is all about, so thank you.
Thank you.
Ditto. All right, we, is there, now we'll ask, does any of the commissioners, oh, sorry, I apologize. Two and a half seconds, though.
Sheriff Robert Ostino, just want to clarify a couple things that you mentioned about Commissioner Quinn. First of all, it was probably when he was mayor, so it was probably the Millville Police there. And second of all, you mentioned that they should have been arrested, you can't just arrest somebody, you have to have probable cause. I mean, many time, I'd ride through a drug area, see a person who I know is dealing drugs, unless you had that probable cause, which is more than mere suspicion, there's nothing you can really do at that point. Just to clarify, to ask if people don't get the wrong impression.
Well, I appreciate it, Sheriff, but there must be some kind of threat for him to be escorted off. And I remember, do say the sheriff's department, but I apologize if I got it, Mr. Millville Police, but it's just that I, just as a reaction to that, instead of having a city commissioner be afraid for his life to stand on it and talking to an audience and trying to make a situation where that was, as he said, the worst house in the city of Millville, that the city of Millville was tackling a problem, to be, to make a statement and afraid, to make a statement in front of a crowd because they were afraid of his safety, that, to me, I was like, well, why, this is a reaction of me, why don't you go after the, and I understand what you're saying.
You can't just search them.
I get that, I get that.
We have rules, we got to go by.
So you're correcting me for something that is my initial reaction, so it's my reaction to it, so.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, again, I'm Nancy Ridgeway, you know the drill, from Upper Deerfield and Fairfield Townships.
Thank you, Ms. Ridgeway.
It's nice to meet all of you and see all of you sitting there smiling. Now, I have a problem. I was told that one of the kidney dialysis centers in the city, in the Bridgeton area, shut down. And that people had to find alternative places to go for their dialysis. And I was informed that the CATS bus, Cumberland County Transit Services for seniors and disabled, will only deliver patients for dialysis in their community. If you, if you live in Violin, you go to Violin, if you live in Bridgeton, you have to go to Bridgeton, they will not take citizens from Bridgeton to Violin for dialysis. And I would implore this commission to look into that. Because like, like the man just said, things are tight. And...
Mr. Ridgeway, I'll happily look into it, I'll say this, 80% of the resources of the CAT system is used to bring kidney dialysis patients, 80%. So we are running all over the place to, for kidney dialysis, which is, I think is about five businesses in the county, or take up 80% of our resources. So I'll ask the question that they, I find that hard to believe, but I'll ask them.
I found it hard to believe.
Yeah, I'll happily ask that question because that would bother me, they do a great job and, that would surprise, but I'll happily, we, two, be another two weeks or whatever will be, or I'll call you, whatever's easier to tell you, to give you an answer to that question.
Well, just find out and make sure that people's health is not being...
Absolutely not, that's a very good point and thank you for raising that.
Good evening, Barbara Natahan, Director of the Office on Aging, I just want to address that. That is true, that is a policy made by the previous county administrator back in 2013, I believe it was, when the casino revenue funds would drop to like 50% of what our yearly allocation was. Casino revenues are for senior citizen and disabled residents, so we had to make a decision and that was made by county administration to make the decision that a resident needs to go to the closest dialysis center to their house. So if Bridgeton did not have a dialysis center, then they would have to go to one closest to their, to their residence. Everybody that was currently on dialysis were grandfathered in and could go from Shiloh to Vineland, you know, three days a week, which is takes a lot of resources out of everybody else that needs the transportation. But that, you know, that is the current policy.
In Bridgeton, they can be brought to the next closest one even if it is out of their city of residency, okay?
So no one was denied service, you got them somewhere.
Right, right, and then we, of course, we can only limit so many people on the dialysis transportation because there is such a demand for it.
Thank you very much for that clarification.
Thank you. Good, Mr. Ridgeway?
Yeah.
Answer your question, okay. Anybody else, sir? Okay, well, actually, does the, Eddie?
Can I have a motion to close?
Can I have a motion to close?
Second.
All favor.
All right.
Now, we kind of, just ask the commissioners if they have any reports of their, what their liaisons do, we'll start slow as you do.
Yes, I do have a couple reports, I'll start with CC Tech, I'm their co-leasance with Commissioner Romero, who's not here tonight. They had a fantastic, I will say, they had a fantastic fundraiser for their scholarship fund, the CC Tech Foundation Board, they raised over $160,000 this past week for scholarships for our students to go on to secondary education. So I have to applaud them and their efforts, I think it's absolutely fantastic, it's the third year they've done this and it just grows leaps and bounds every year and I just want to say thank you to the community for the outpouring of support for our students in the scholarship fund event. The other committee I sit on is the Fairgrounds Committee. And Commissioner Albrecht, you mentioned that we are looking to begin our recreation plan here in Cumberland County and it does start with the fairgrounds and that's great and that's fantastic and we certainly want to honor our past as we move into our future and the Fairgrounds Committee has been a huge part of that, the Cumberland County Fair has been a huge part of that. They are the oldest fair in the state of New Jersey and I think that's something to be really proud about, talk about a rich history and that's what we always talk about, right? That's what makes Cumberland so special, things like our rhododendrons and our rich history in the fair, you know, that's what makes this place special, that's why we do this and we fight for it because we love it. And one of the things and one of the reasons that we did return that fee to them, the rental fee, is because they could not host their demolition derby, which if you've spent any amount of years here in Cumberland County, you know that that is kind of a heart and soul kind of thing that we do here. Makes us part of who we are, whether we like it or not, it's, you know, part of Cumberland County culture. And we did remove the fence, it was not put back up, so they were not able to get the insurance to do so, they've had to seek out fencing and other... They've had to seek out fencing and other means. They had other issues with, um, bleachers and such as, such as, that they had to get approvals for, um, and this was the reason, because they didn't have the things that they needed to carry on with the fair and get the insurances that were necessary. Um, so because we are honoring the hard work that they have done over the years, um, and hopefully working with them in a better way in the future, that's why that was done. And then I, I have to make a comment, as I would be remiss if I didn't, about, um, the Gun Safety and Violence Awareness Month. So many of you came out here tonight for that reason, and I thank you for that, especially our young student here, Amelia, thank you. It takes a lot for our students to get up and speak up, and I'm so proud that you did. A lot of times you guys get lost on the phones and the chewing gum for the mind, you know, so I'm so glad that you are awake. Um, it's refreshing to see. I have been an educator here in Cumberland County for, um, over 10 years. I spent the last eight years at Bridgeton High School, and now I'm at Millville High School. And I can tell you that Amelia is correct. Our students do not take it seriously. Not only am I an educator, but I'm a mother. I have two young sons, they're 11 and 13. And they go to their friends' houses. We live in a neighborhood, um, they, you know, they, they go in and out. Yes, I know the parents, but I don't know the ins and outs of their home. I don't know where they keep the sugar, quite frankly, right? You know, how much candy is my child having when they're over there? Where's the alcohol? Where's the cannabis, which is now legal? Where are their guns? Maybe they have a different policy than I do in my home, and I don't necessarily know that. And so awareness and education is never a bad thing. It's not vilifying anybody. I don't like that we think that, we're educating them. And quite frankly, I remember as a young kid, the DARE program coming in and showing us all the different kinds of drugs. That was about awareness. It wasn't vilifying anybody, it was making us kids aware. Last year, 71,000 people died of fentanyl overdose. And I can tell you that my students, I have seniors at Millville High School. So you wanna talk about being in the neighborhoods and being with the people of Cumberland County? I do that every day. Most of them have parents that they have lost to gun violence, or that are in prison, or have addiction problems. They haven't seen them, they're living on the streets. They're in halfway houses. The list goes on and on and on. And I had my student the other day, we were having a conversation, they were going to prom, and I said, you know, just, just be careful, be safe, you know? And they had a whole awareness program for the students about drug use and alcohol. He said, no, 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 I don't mess with that, miss, I don't mess with that. I don't do that, I know better. Why do they know better? Because years and years and years of awareness and education, that's why they know better. It's the same thing with this. I do want my sons to be educated. I educate them myself, but I want them to know and I want them to be aware, and I want our students to take things seriously, because quite frankly, our young people do not. Everything is an image on a screen. You have to continue to hammer that issue home. And so I'm glad that we are bringing awareness to this. I think it's no different than the other things that we bring awareness to in our school system, so I'm really proud of us as a county for doing that. I'm also proud of us for the hospital fee program that we enacted tonight. And Ms. Ridgeway, you had some suggestions for that? So do I. Maybe using some of that money to help with mental health in this county, because a lot of the students, a lot of the people that pick up those guns, that pick up those drugs, that pick up that alcohol, are suffering with mental illness. So maybe that's a direction that we can go and use some of that extra money now to put forth for good use in a way that will improve a lot of problems here in this county. So thank you.
So, uh, yeah, I'd just like to reach out to the Veterans Affairs. Diana Pittman is doing a great job, um, reaching out to our local vets. Couple of weeks ago, I had a particular vet reach out to me and said, I have a friend who's on the ledge. So I said, okay, fine. I said, uh, give me his name, his phone number. I reached out. And turns out that his, he lost his job, he, um, has gas cut, shut off, and he's, he's a very interesting story because his, uh, father was a victim of the Killing Fields before he came, he's from Cambodia. So, anyway, Diana is trying to reach, is reaching out and trying to help him in many ways, and he's not even from the county. So whoever mentioned about caring about the vets, we do. It's, my heart goes out to them. We, not too long ago, had a bill passed by Congressman Van Drew about Agent Orange and other exposures to conflict. Uh, that's, that's one of my main stays, and that's one of the reasons why I wanna be, I wanna stay as a, as a commissioner. The second, the second thing is too, is that Melissa Niles, she's there? Uh, she's not, oh, there you are. She's doing a, a, a pretty darn good job with what I'm seeing, and she responds to all the things I ask her to do. I think that, uh, in the long run, we're gonna see a better mental health and addiction program. So that's, that's coming. She's making me more aware of the type of necessities that are out there. So that's, that's another, that's another avenue that, again, being in this very short notice, um, especially having 13 liaison ships, which most of us do have, um, it gets a little bit of grueling of where we are today and tomorrow. So I wanted to say she's doing a heck of a job with that, and she's gonna continue to do a better job in the future because where I'm working with her, and I think with, over time, you're gonna see these, these, um, problems, especially with the, with the jail, start taking effect once we start putting a new jail in place. And that's coming, hopefully soon, right, Commissioner?
Yep. Um, that's, that's number two. And the third one is, um, on the, um, gun violence and public safety, I, I think some people have maybe listened to what I had said, and I'm sure you can listen to the recording. And I was basically talking about separating the issue because I thought two things had to be taught in a different light. Now, I'm not a person who's born in a shell or, shell room, out in the glossy world and, you know, with a golden palace. Um, I'm from Newark, New Jersey. And I moved out of Newark, New Jersey during the race riots when I was a kid. So I know what gun violence is about. My kids, my, my family moved me out. And, um, it was, it was hard because they lost, they left all my family. So I'm not exactly, um, not attuned to, to violence in the household. I won't bring up my personal life, but I think you should understand the person before you criticize. So with that said, that's why I said yes on the commission, um, on the ordinance and the resolution, because I think the prosecutor has her heart in the right spot. But I like to have more conversation with her because I'm very upset with the fact that, Amelia, right? Amelia?
See, gotta get it right the first place.
Uh, Amelia, uh, point, made one very good point. They're not getting the education in the school system. And if they're being left out, then I wanna know why. And I'm going to work hard, because I am a gun owner, and I do believe in the Second Amendment. And I do, it basically gives us the right to be free every day, because this is what our vets have fought for. And this is how we became a republic. So there are different issues here, but Amelia, I'm gonna fight with the prosecutor to get somebody in your school. Yeah, I don't think we're gonna fight, we'll probably end up agreeing with that. And any other school in the county that needs it, because I will help bring awareness to that kind of violence, uh, to your school. And I don't want you walking to school or taking the bus to school in fear. That's all I've gotta say, thank you.
Okay. Cap is all.
Yep, so, um, I'm gonna keep, I'll keep going on that. So, I was gonna get the mic, you're back. To stay on that same subject, um, I actually teach Ms. Lodes children, and you sit in a room with kids in a lockdown drill, five-year-olds, six-year-olds, you wanna try to keep them quiet for 20 minutes or half an hour. And, you know, we have to make it, and sometimes they go around and bang on the doors and shake them, you know, to simulate a real event. It's, it's scary, you know? It's scary for them. Sometimes you have kids fooling around, sometimes you kids, have kids crying, but this is our world today, so we definitely need to, uh, teach these kids about gun safety. And I don't know if I spoke about this in the public at the last meeting or not, but, um, I owned a business years ago in Millville, a launch mat, so I was there late at night, and I was dealing with money, and I went and bought my first gun. And I was shocked that, I mean, it was hard to get the gun, but once I had it in my hands, I had to go seek out how to use it and, and gun safety. It, I had a gun in my hand and I really didn't know how to use it, and put a clip in it, so I had to seek out, you know? And, and maybe that's something else we need to talk about. Um, we, you can't just give up and, uh, and talking about the other states, what others, where are these guns coming from? What states are the biggest problem? I was thinking about that when you were talking.
Pennsylvania.
Pennsylvania is more.
North Carolina.
We need to start putting pressures on some of these other states that they're affecting everyone else, you know? If it's so, if everyone knows it's so easy to go to Texas or Pennsylvania to go to a gun show and get a gun, our laws aren't gonna work. So we have to start putting more pressure on some of these other states.
If you do illegally, you can't buy, purchase a gun in Pennsylvania legally.
I don't know the other states, I, I, I'm just saying, they're ending up-
I've been to gun shows there and they, they, you can't, you can't do it, so.
I don't know the laws. They're ending up here illegally, so something needs to be done. I don't know how they're getting here, but they're getting here. So we need to do something about it. That's a nonpartisan issue. I don't, you know, we're, we all need to be safe, and hopefully everybody's on board with that. To totally change subjects, agricultural meetings were, were very good. Matt, is Matt still here? There he is. We have, um, at the Cumberland Mall, if anybody wants to get produce, we have, uh, local vendors and local farmers from our area, so if you know any farmers that are looking to sell vegetables, plants, things like that locally from the community, have them talk to Matt, we'll get them set up in the Cumberland Mall. Saturdays and Sundays, correct, Matt?
Uh, we're moving it to Sunday noon to five.
Sunday noon to five.
Let me clarify what farmer means.
So, I'm sorry?
What it means to be a farmer. I mean, it, it's not just somebody that grows flowers in their yard, it has to be.
Oh, no, it's-
Somebody with five tillable acres that is a registered farmer, so it's-
Yep, okay, yeah.
Oh, I can't take my tomatoes.
No, you can't.
That's why I wanted to clarify.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
I'd be careful, we actually found another virus, uh, with, with, in the tomatoes too, just recently.
Yep, they did. So, um, and that's it for me.
Spears?
Wow, I have to say, this has really been a very-
Exciting meeting.
Yes. And I'm gonna, and I'm gonna say that, there have been a lot of topics covered tonight. Um, I'm gonna continue to make this a Melissa Niles night, um, uh, doing an amazing job with the Recovery Center. Um, I believe someone, Ms. Smith, stated that oftentimes, we don't really understand what's going on out there and that people are having real issues, and it's really true, they do. Everything impacts them from a national level to a local level. We worry about the deficit, we worry if we're gonna get our social security checks, we worry if the Medicare, Medicaid is not going to be paid. People are really talking about those issues. They're also talking about addictions and mental health issues. And this month, we're going out of Mental Health Awareness Month. And there have been so many programs and, and activities around that, and I have to commend the Capital Recovery Center for hosting those types of programs. And I don't think people really realize how much the county does do for the people who live here. Not only the library, the Board of Health, but, but our Recovery Center, they hosted a blended learning youth mental health first aid training to teach youths how to recognize mental health issues in children from six to 18. They did that, there was a waiting list, they had to, it was overflow. And they talk about substance abuse and all those things. And every third Saturday, they host the Be Kind to Your Mind Healing Activities for mums, and those are mothers understanding, mothers to sit down and talk and, and support each other. Also, a huge piece that they have is, and you gotta see this, you have to see Recovery on Wheels. You will not believe that. I call it a bus, but it is literally a mobile unit, and it's outfitted to provide all kinds of supportive services, recovery support services, access to detox treatment, Narcom, everything imaginable, support counseling, it's all there in that one vehicle. And when you walk onto that, the staff is there, and they're just amazing with the way they interact with the communities. I saw it at the Olm Center once, but this Thursday, it's gonna be at the Spirit and Truth Ministries, and it's gonna be there from 10 to, I believe, 2:00. And in addition to the support services that they're providing, they're also gonna provide showers, clothes, and a barber for homeless. So these are some of the real hands-on things that they do at the Recovery Center. They also have family meetings and men in training, where men are mentoring men to become better men and better fathers and better people in the community. All of these programs, and I've seen some of them in action, they are actually functioning. You know, we often think there's nothing going on. I know I can pick up the phone because all of us here get people that call you, oh, I need this, can you help me get this, what's going on here? I have had so many people call for mental health services, where, uh, uh, somebody's doing drugs, uh, first thing I do, I pick up the phone, I call Melissa. And one night, and I have to keep saying this, one night it was close to 10 o'clock, the per, the parent was frantic. I didn't know what to do. She immediately reached out to them. And he texts me back saying, oh my God, you sent me an angel. She had that set up. The people of this county work hard to provide those hands-on services, and that's just a little bit of what they do. I could sit here half the night and tell you all the other programs they do, but I'm, I, you know? You know, and it's a lot of information, but you can always go on the county website and call the, um, Recovery Center, I think it's 72 North Pearl Street, it's right here in the city of Bridgeton, and it is busy. Also, right here in this building, and it's part of our county-funded, one of our, I believe, one of our county-funded programs, is the Seabrook Educational and Cultural Museum, it's right downstairs. And part of that is funded, I believe, through Cultural and Heritage. And it's an amazing historical document of the people who came here during World War II to work at Seabrook Farms. Many of us, our parents came here from Eastern Europe, uh, my parents came here from the West Indies, the Japanese Americans who were so wrongly interred in camps and out on the West Coast, came here to work at Seabrook Farms. It became a mini United Nations. Downstairs in that library, there are photos, videos, films, people come, it's literally a resource center, it's a global resource center, people are coming from all over the globe to sit down and study Seabrook Farms. So if you have a chance, you can reach out to them, and I'm gonna give you, you can reach out by calling this municipal building or reaching out to seabrookeducation.org. The museum is open, you can tour the museum and just literally see things as the old uniforms they used to wear. It's just an amazing piece of work down there. Um, also, the, um, and I'm gonna skip a little bit, um, to our county library. If you all have not been to that county library, you need to go, and you need to go soon. Honestly, if you know Barnes and Noble, where you have little couches and the lounges and you have all your computers, I'm waiting for a coffee, a little coffee section, okay? And I have an idea, she's got that in the works, okay? Our, our director is, um, Ms. Brewer, she is, Jennifer is just doing a wonderful job. Her staff is knowledgeable, they provide free services, it's just about anything you can imagine, computer training, copies, the training, I mean, kid stuff, the kids are, it's amazing, their program. Okay, I'm a library freak, I admit, okay? This is very biased, I'm a social worker, I'm biased. Libraries, that was the only place my parents would allow us to go by ourselves and stay all day, okay? So please, check out the county library. Um, also, in June, you all know that that is the first state celebration of Juneteenth. Um, on June 17th, Jennifer and her staff have been amazing in working with the community to host, it's called the Juneteenth Intergenerational Freedom Brunch. And it's an educational piece, because a lot of people don't know what Juneteenth is, why are we celebrating it, what's going on? And that will be held on June 17th from 11 to 2:00, and it is family-friendly. Bring your kids, it's interactive, they're gonna be playing, all kinds of things will be going on, and there will be a video presentation and such. I think that's about all I have this evening. I hope I haven't missed anything, but I have to tell you, um, Ms. Smith and, and everybody on this board, there, although we don't all agree politically, and we don't, I mean, that's the way of the world, we live in a democracy, you can think what you want, but folks on this board are committed to serving this county, and they do the work. And I have to say that, I'm, I'm your world, one of the world's biggest skeptics, I am, I don't believe anything, okay? Been there, done that. But when you reach out to people, you reach out to the administration with an issue or something that needs to be done, when people call you, because I can't stress that, people will call you, text you, call your mother and say, "I'm trying to reach Donna." They are serious about issues. You know? And when you reach out to staff or can reach out to your, your co-commissioners and actually get that kind of help, assistance for the people we serve, then I have to say thank you. And I'm appreciative of it because what we do, we govern regardless of what we think. We're here to serve the people of this county. And we're here because we live here too. My mom, her social security check might not make it either. So we all are in the same boat. And as long as we're working towards making this county a better place for everybody, I'm on board. So, thank you all.
I appreciate Commissioner Pierce and she, I bounce off a lot of things off her to, to see where I stand. And she always gives me the solid feedback on it, so, good or bad or different. So I, just a couple of things that I didn't the last time, I, the library, I'll start backwards here, the library, the Jake's Park was approved in front of our library. And, and we were at a meeting at the library and all of a sudden, they, they had all these plans for this park, way above what we were doing. They had the storytelling, they were, one of the concerns of Commissioner Rivera was how is it going to be tied to the library? Well, you don't have to be concerned. They've already thought about how they're going to get people to be, to get into the library, to see the library, because Jake's Park will feature storytelling around the park. And I was amazed, I, I know Commissioner Pierce was amazed, like, wow! And that was above and beyond, but they've already thought that out. I was like, wow, impressive. Today, our superintendent of our CC Tech, Donna Dieter Rossi, was selected as the superintendent of the year, which was pretty impressive. So very pleased. I, I got a chance to attend and it was a very good event. It highlighted all our educators that were selected amongst their peers to be honored as the teacher of the year, personnel of the year, which, from all the schools of the county. And it, you could tell, actually, I, I don't know that most of it, but you could tell, they were all kind of from the same mold in the sense that, how much they cared about what was happening, what they did at school. And they went from, I think the oldest was 31 years, to the, to the youngest, three years in their system. But they were all teachers of the year or personnel of the year at their respective schools. So it was a really great event. I got a chance to go down to East Point Lighthouse, which we, this board has taken consideration to make it that our southern park, part of our system, to take on the responsibility of keeping that area, special area for the county and that building, special to this county and unique to this county. And it was nice to go there because when they started talking, they said, Doug, what are your, what we, was the commission thinking? I said it. But at the same time, they were talking about Senator Testa, his idea of what, so, and then it was talking about the township, what they've done. It's a team effort from township people to the county, to the, to the state that are involved with, and also to our congressman, that they are so involved with this project, which was, I was like, wow! I mean, I was just one of many things coming to bear. That's how important that, that lighthouse is to this county. It attracts a lot of tourism. People don't even know how many tours come there. When I drove up, there was plates from Pennsylvania, Maryland, and I drove up on a rainy type of day, and that was the two cars in front of me, not all the other cars that were up front on a back road in the middle of nowhere. So that's the kind of people come down, just drive down to see. Actually, the other plate was New York. So they had, they had three plates from out of state in our, at, at our facility, doesn't really have an outside bathroom, has no, no respectable driveway, but they get there, they figure it out. So I got a chance and actually I'm sitting next to, I went to the, the, how does it happen? The Black Hall of Fame. And actually, it was, we have some pretty special people in this county, the things they've done. And actually, I happened to sit my back to my commissioner, who also has some special, because she had her medallion on. And it was a lot of talent there in this county we have that was being honored. So, and I guess they revived it heavy years ago.
On COVID, I think they stopped it for now four, five, six years.
It's 19, I think, or 18.
Yeah, it's been a while.
So it was, so it was a very good, well-tended, very good program. And I, I just love to hear the stories where, and they're all different. Everybody has their own stories, how they got there to be honored. Some don't like to be, they don't want to acknowledge it, but it's good to acknowledge I also, this weekend come up as Memorial Day weekend. And there are Memorial Day ceremonies. And I say this because it was drilled into me by, by my dad, that, yeah, I used to, for 25 years, worked the whole week, starting now, for the Greek festival. And by the time Monday rolled around, I was, I was pretty done. I had been spent, and I, by Sunday night, I was just looking to be at 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning getting out. But always in my head, my dad made sure that we were there to, or somewhere at a ceremony to honor our veterans. So I encourage you, I know Violet has their parade, has their park. Millville has a heck of a, a program themselves. And in the end, and I was told the oldest celebration of veterans is at Cedarville, that they have, and I went down to see their parade. Actually, it was better than Violet, if I have to admit that, the parade. And I was, I was like, wow! So, and they really went all out. So I kind, if I'm missing something, please chime in. Well, also, the, anybody who wants to contribute their time to help put flags into the, any of the memorial cemeteries. Which, which. Which we all do. Which we all do. So. Please, I think start 7:00, 7:30. About Pleasant and, and Millville. And that goes to the different cemeteries from there. So if you guys, I, the one thing, and I did get a call from one of, a person who mentioned that, and I'll, I'll say this to the commissioners and I'll, that maybe next year, we could have a ceremony, maybe not Monday, but maybe earlier on the weekend at our county cemetery, Veteran Cemetery, just something small. I said, I, I like the idea and I'm kind of glad that we, we should be doing something. It doesn't have to be anything major, but should be doing something there, especially because of the land we've dedicated to it, so. So. I was the last year for it. Really? Well, I heard, I was told there was never, there wasn't a ceremony planned, but that's good, so let's continue it, so. But I was told it wasn't, so. Fairwood here in a second. Actually, this commission, also talking about mental health, this commission actually was circulating a letter to, about the Baker Act in Florida, Baker Act, because it was a response to the homeless problem, that we've had several meetings and it's affecting a lot of the communities. So, and this county, this commission has said that we think that some of the laws should change to help us, help, help our military challenge. And also, people that are drunk, have drug issues that realize maybe if they would, could silver up and make a rational decision, they actually need help. That needs time. With that, one of the biggest things, and there was somebody in one of the, our rooms that said, Doug, my, my sister was Baker Act of Florida, that if we do something like that, there's consequences. We have to provide the facilities and the ability to treat them. So it's been said to be by Commissioner Cilio, and I've apologized, that it's mentioned that we have to do more. So it's great to say we support the Baker Act, but this county, we dedicated that we're not going to just put someone in a room and lock them up. The goal is to get them help. Response to that, we're building a behavioral social science building to the next generation of social workers in this county. And even the university, even Rowan University is going to send their people to there to be trained. It's going to be a focal point, and it's here in this county. Let's take advantage of it. So, and last thing, we have been meeting, well, I'll say two things. We have been meeting with Rowan University. The first part, and I've been on this tangent about our staff using interns as a resource. They have trade, they're trading people, the next generation of people to work in their shoes that are your fill in. Let's use them to help us. And I, I always make the statement that we will never be the New York Yankees, but we can be the Minnesota Farm Club, which is the best farm club in baseball. And so we can grow our people here. Donna, it works, so.
I believe you.
I'll educate you. So, and we grow our people and, and produce it, so. And I don't know, acknowledge your tennis, so. But if we grow our people, they are willing to bring people here and we should use them, including GIS, engineering. Well, we followed up with that meeting. We had our transportation. We had our engineer, we had our planner in the room with them, with the next thing. Rowan University is dedicated, said they will help Cumberland do ever, whatever we need for the top, help Cumberland move us forward. That meeting is already, I don't know if all of it's happened, but the transportation engineer from Rowan has already contacted our transportation person to help us set up transportation in this county for our residents. I don't know how it's going to start. We need a system that people can get from point A to point B to point C. It's not there now. Not everybody has a car. You talk about hard times, it's going to get harder to have a, a vehicle, insurance, maintenance, all that, that, that we need to provide something. We will. And we're, and that is the mission of our transportation person, and I know Barbara Nedhob's in here, she was part of that meeting. They understand, and one of the things is that when we're leaving, I'll have to say this, they said, "Well, just call us when you need help." And I go, I'm like, looking at everyone, "They need help. We're telling you now, we would like your help." So that, that they call us, not us calling them. So hopefully, they come down here, I think it'd be a great partnership. It's just one piece of the puzzle, another piece of the puzzle. So, and, all right.
I love the interns. I really appreciate the interns. It makes no sense not to have interns.
At, at every department. And maybe, and hopefully, they're our kids. They're our kids, because the goal is to keep them here to give our brain drip. I'm going to give you one more statistic. Economic development is county, they have, they came out with a statistic that said that, at an average of all the counties they have, with 65% of people live there, stay there, grow there, work there, stay after they get that school, I guess. Well, a couple of counties was 35. I'm like, 35? So our job is to keep our old people here, because those people are our future. And if we don't keep them here, we're not, we don't have a future. So all these things we're doing is to help our people stay here and, and be better, so. And, okay, thank you. Do I have a motion for?
No executive session.
No executive session.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
All favor?
All right.
8:38.
This has been a QBC television production in association with our partners and sponsors. QBC broadcasts on Comcast Cable Channel 22 and live streams its programming on Facebook and YouTube. All rights reserved by Quinn Media and QBC, programming that serves the South Jersey market.